Good evening if you'll join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening and thank you again for joining us this evening for our school director's board meeting. The first thing I want to do is ask if there's any scouts in the audience. Do we have any scouts that have joined us? Okay, if anyone comes later, let us know so we can make sure we introduce them. All right, first on our agenda is to adopt the agenda. We'll entertain our motion to adopt the agenda.
I move that we adopt tonight's agenda.
Second? So if you can segment all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. All right, next is special recognition. We have a couple of items on here. Actually, some really fun things. Introduction of new administrators and then the Evergreen Award. But first is introduction of new administrators. Is Janay Gomes coming up for that?
Yes, she is.
Hi, Janay.
Is this them?
Yeah.
Good evening, thank you. Does it matter which one we start with? Thanks for having me. We want to start with the administrators. We have two of them this evening that would be recognized. We'll start with Kate Dwyane. If you wanted to come up. Kate was here about a year and a half ago or so as an associate principal for HeLa. And Kate is now our principal at Y East Middle School. And we wanted to make sure that we invited her and celebrated and make sure we recognized and brought your family again and wanted to have you say a few words.
Thank you so much. I think I have a big appreciation for the work of everyone in the whole school system. Now with my youngest starting kindergarten next year and then I'll have a second and fourth grader next year. My husband working in elementary and then, you know, getting to spend time at the high schools too. But middle school's always had a really special place in my heart. And so I just want to thank all of you for the privilege to serve kids at that level and to have the opportunity to go and be at Y East. And I just want to thank everyone for all the support. I think Mike and Janay and Bill and then, you know, daily contact with Brian Grimstead over here. And all the secondary principals have been really welcoming. So it's just an exciting, exciting journey and I just want to thank everyone again for the opportunity and the privilege. Thank you. Today is my family, my husband Tyler Dwyane, my daughter Finley who's five, my son Sawyer who's seven, and my daughter Hattie who's almost nine. So thanks for being here tonight. Thanks for having good behavior too.
If I could really quickly say, Kate was brought in as an interim over the Christmas break basically and did, I think, has done a tremendous job of working with the building staff and trying to kind of just really reassure everyone that the programs that, the great programs that we have at Y East are continuing and moving forward. And thought it was real important for us because of the success that she's had to make it a permanent position rather than interim and really thankful to have her. I do, I think also in talking with Kate and I want to recognize her husband Tyler, who's an associate principal at Harmony, and I think how supportive he's been also of the process. I know I'm not going to apologize for Kate not actually saying how supportive he's been. I'll do it for her. And I agree, your kids, that's tremendous. The behavior of the kids, that's really good. But really, thank you. Kate's been awesome at Y East and she's going to continue to be awesome at Y East. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Our second one will be Erin Herman. If Erin, you could come up. Erin is a new hire for us as principal of Burke Bridge Creek BDC. And Erin has actually been an employee in Evergreen from, I believe, 97, look at my sheet, to 2009 at Image, served in a variety of roles. Most recently, he's over at Camus as the elementary principal of Helen Beller. And we're really excited to have him come back and join us. And I think Darcy's here somewhere as well, so it's kind of fun to have all of that happening as well as transitioning over. But is there anything you'd like to say?
Please. Well, first of all, thank you for having me. I'm very excited to come back to the Evergreen Public Schools where I started my career. I want to thank the school board and Mr. Merlino and the Burke Bridge Creek community for giving me this opportunity. I'm very excited to get to work with you and my new colleagues and the Burke Bridge Creek community to support our students. And I just want to recognize my family because they're a huge part of me. My wife Nicole, who's actually a teacher at Ellsworth Elementary, my daughter Maya who's 16, and Haley who's 18. So thank you, guys.
I could really quickly, Erin, I knew Erin. I've been around maybe almost as long as, not quite actually. You started here before I even started in the district. But Erin is somebody that has such a great reputation in the school district. And I've heard from at least two or three people in Camus talking about how they were so upset that they lost their best principal to the Evergreen School District, which of course, we all knew he would come back because there's a drawback to Evergreen, right? And I see your wife nodding her head back there. So we are extremely lucky to have you. We had great internal candidates for the position as well. And it's pretty rare when you actually go outside the district because we do have a lot of great candidates. And I think it just shows how much, it's just how well everybody thought of Erin and how excited we are to have him back. So he's going to be a great addition to BDC. And Darcy, of course, is going to be going to the new elementary, 22, or I guess we'll name it tonight. Anyway, so thank you, Erin.
Thank you.
Really happy to have you.
I'm excited.
So let's transition to the Evergreen Awards.
Thank you. And I know that your kids have something tonight too, so if you guys need to seek out, I'm hoping to do so. So Evergreen Awards is always an exciting time. We have three different awards this evening. One for classified, certified, and then we have a group this evening. And for all of those, we also have principals coming in and speaking on their behalf. So if we could start with classified, we have Willie Winstead with Illahi. And then he is the principal that will be speaking.
Hi, I'm so, so excited tonight to share this night with you and to be here with Willie. So to say that Willie wears many hats would be an understatement at Illahi. He starts his day controlling and helping with the traffic in our parking lot upon dismissal, arrival. He also does crosswalks in the morning and in the afternoon, keeping us, helping to keep our students safe. He does a security check around the building and then he starts his playground monitoring job. He does every single lunch, six elementary lunches, with a smile on his face. And really more importantly, or most importantly, he connects with our kids. He enjoys his work and that shows. He learns the kids and names them and greets them by first name. He knows all of the teachers. He's very much a part of our staff. Willie goes above and beyond. An example of that is he, you know, we have some students that are still learning to do recess and still learning to do lunch. And he often becomes a part of our, part of their success plan. He is always willing to go the extra mile with, for a student at recess or for a student at lunch if a student might need extra help. So I'm honored tonight to be here presenting this to Mr. Willie. It's very special.
Speak in public. Thank you. Real quick, I love this district. My first time in, working for Evergreen was 50 years ago. I raised eight kids through, went through Evergreen, eight grandkids that are in the process right now and two great granddaughters that are here. And I think I'm the oldest playground supervisor we have in this district. And I'll give you a hint, my oldest child is 56 years old. They were football players and everything. They just love this district. And I don't know what else to say.
You know how I introduced your wife who's been around?
My wife, Eileen, she's been over at, what's the name of the school you work for? I think she's been over there 32 or 33 years. I bounced around. I couldn't keep a job, but she's still. Like I'm not a public speaker, but thank you so much for this.
Thank you.
That's what it's all about right there. Certified, Jendell, if you could come up. Principal is going to talk about Michelle O'Neil, instructional coach. Why can't you come on up?
Okay, thank you for having us tonight. There is not a teacher more deserving of this award than Michelle O'Neil. Michelle currently serves as our instructional coach at Mill Plain. And I began to know Michelle when I was a assistant principal at Harmony and she was a halftime assistant. You were not an assistant. You were the halftime coach, the instructional coach there. An halftime teacher. And then when I made my journey to Mill Plain, Michelle called me once that Saturday afternoon and said, "Hey, I think this might be something I'd be interested in." I had no idea the impact that move and that decision she made had on our building and my ability to lead in that building. Michelle is, she is one of the best. There's so many things I thought. What am I going to say about Michelle? She, I think words to describe Michelle would include, well, number one would be passionate. She's got more passion for this work than entire buildings might hold. She is dedicated. Michelle will do anything she's asked to do and she does it with thoughtful. She's thoughtful about things. She's considerate of things. And she's really good at what she does. She was nominated by six teachers in our building. Michelle has coached every teacher in our building, maybe with the exception of a few, on complete voluntary basis. I have not had to direct coaching in our building. It has been an absolute phenomenon to see the relationships that Michelle has built, the trust that she's built with staff and the impact she has on not just their learning, but also the learning of the students. I wanted to give just a couple quotes from the nominating teachers. And I use the word dedication and here's an example of that dedication. Coming from a group of reading specialists, Michelle, it says, "One example of Michelle's dedication and commitment to students was when our building had a need for an additional fifth grade class, but we hadn't yet hired a teacher. In a matter of days, she collected books for a classroom library, instructional materials, desks and other furniture. She created an environment that was welcoming to this new group of students. She took on the task of being the teacher while fulfilling her job as the instructional coach. The students were able to bond as a class. From the start of the school year, she did this in the very best interest of children because the alternative was to start with oversized classrooms, hiring a new teacher and then disrupt the classroom communities that had already been formed." So I asked Michelle to do this and I asked her to do it because I knew it was the best thing for kids and I knew Michelle believed and believes in what is best for kids. Michelle did not bat an eye. She said, "Yep, I will do it." And she did it in a way that was so inclusive and made such a huge impact on that classroom and those kids for the entire year. And that's just an example of what Michelle will do and how she does it with a smile on her face. She also does my personal Uber summonings, which is really awesome. She just, she does it all. So there's no one more deserving, as I said. Michelle, thank you so much for your service at Mill Plain. You make a huge difference in the lives of all of us and we love you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I am very honored to be nominated for this award from the teachers that I serve because I feel like I make them work very hard and they still keep coming back for more. So I think that speaks to the culture of learning that we've built at Mill Plain. Admin, teachers, students, families, community, we are working hard every day. So thank you for allowing me to serve in this capacity. I want to thank my family and my very well-behaved teenagers in the back and my husband who tirelessly is supporting my every move, especially when it comes to supporting the kids in our community. So thank you so much and my teachers also that are here. Thank you, thanks.
And can we also thank your mother for raising, her mother was a teacher in the Vancouver School District for years and was my high school senior CWP teacher.
Our final award is a group award. It's really exciting. The nominations, for those that aren't familiar, come from the staff. And so we send it out and staff nominate and then we have a selection process. And so the group tonight is 49th Street Academy. And it's not just one specific group or individual, it's the entire 49th Street Academy. So it's really exciting and I know all, couldn't be here this evening. Jay Buneau is going to come up and speak on behalf and then Amber, there you are, Amber wants to come up. And I know there's quite a few of them that are here, so if you want to share names and have everybody come up. And we did something a little different. We did a plaque for them instead of doing the boxes that we create this school. So we're excited about that.
So first of all, it's an entire school, an entire community of folks who work to make a substantial difference in the kids' life at 49th Street. So it's my privilege to introduce everybody but and celebrate these folks. I think the best way to conceptualize exactly why they deserve this is to read the nomination. It was actually presented by Gina. And she did an awesome job. So every single staff there at 49th Street works together and has such an impact on students and students and staff's lives. Staff support each other, students and community members. From great leadership down, the staff here consistently improve the skills and behaviors of some of our most vulnerable students. The motto, "Any student, anytime," is not just something we take lightly. It's something that happens each and every day with the same level of care and compassion in a manner of the student or the situation. We witness daily what most would say is improbable. I have seen students go from destroying classrooms and refusing attendance to growing to compassionate, helpful, motivated, eager to please and excited about learning. I see the true value of employees filled with love and patience every day and celebrate together every small success, every obstacle overcome and every tear shed. The bonds and respect that are formed here for staff and students alike are priceless. So this group of amazing people do amazing work every day. I don't ever hesitate to send a student there because I know they'll be taken care of. I know that there needs to be met. I know that they will come back and be dedicated members and productive citizens when they're done there. So thank you and all the work that you do is amazing.
Oh, you want me to introduce them?
Yeah.
Do you guys want to know their roles or do you just want to?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. So Lauren Sickles, he's in RBT training. Same with Gina Wright-Smith. They both are working in secondary, secondary day treatment classes. Matthew Beeman is one of our secondary high school teachers. Anthony Roberts is one of our fearless coaches. Therapeutic Intervention Coach is his formal title. Coach Roberts is what everyone calls him. We got White Collar Sisone. He is our teacher in one of the secondary life skills classes. We have, oh my gosh. I know Ryan. We have Ryan Linkart and she is a one-on-one pair with one of our students in the middle school class, day treatment. And Mary Ann Kaiser is our other teacher in the life skills secondary. And then we have Deshiaon Dean, goes by Shay, Coach Shay, DeeDee, a lot of things like that. Another therapeutic intervention coach. And these two guys have been there since the beginning. Shay's been there even before 49th Street was at 49th Street. So their dedication is what keeps all of us going. All of the staff come in every single day and work. And what Gina said is have their hearts in it and you can really see the impact that they have on the kids. So I couldn't do my job without this amazing staff that we have.
If I could just say real quick, I was fortunate to go visit 49th Street Academy this fall and Jay was there and Amber. I can't say more about exactly what was written there, obviously is 100% accurate. I think people on the outside may view 49th Street Academy as not a desirable place to be. I don't think any one of the staff members would choose to be anywhere else but 49th Street Academy. And so it's really amazing the work that you do. And Amber does an unbelievable job leading that team.
We are going to have you get your picture with the board, Willie and Michelle. If you can come back up and do the honors.
Can you just scoot in chest a little bit more? And then make sure I can see everybody's face? Oh no, there's one here in the back.
Everybody else?
I'll step out of the way if you want to get a picture. Who did three eyes on me?
Such an honor and a privilege.
Don't leave before the name.
Yes! We need to make sure that all of the 49th Street Academy staff stays until we vote for the new name. All right, so next on our agenda, matters reserved for board action. As we alluded to just a little bit ago, we have new construction. That elementary, school number 22, which we've been calling it for years now because it's been in part of the plans as we've done our bond work and it's in construction right now. And then also the renaming of 49th Street Academy, which will soon be in construction. Groundbreaking is soon, right?
Yeah.
Soon beginning of May, so?
Yeah.
In a couple weeks.
Yes, right around the corner. So it's important that we name these facilities. The first one we're going to start with is elementary school number 22. And I just kind of wanted to give a little bit of background to naming the building and kind of the process that we go through. So the board has worked other committee. And the committee gets together and I think that they met and Gail can probably help us with this, but they got together several times and they came up with names for the schools. They came to our last school board meeting and presented the final names to us. And then at our next scheduled board meeting, which is this evening, the board will then vote on the name. So before we start with kind of some discussion around it, Darcy, did you or anybody from the group want to come up and say anything about the process or?
Well, I don't think I can be as adorable as the children last time. I think they did a really nice job presenting what their reasons and the research behind the names. So, and they are here today, so I think we're good. But did you want to speak, Mr. President?
Oh, no, I'm fine.
Nina had girl scouts, so.
Maybe you wanted to come up in case we have questions for this, maybe how, you know, some of the names, the final names came to the, from the committee to the board. But we can ask questions. I'm sure the board wants to have a little bit of discussion about before we vote.
Well, could you just kind of quickly, just for people who weren't here before and for the record, just talk about how you got the, not all, just how you got the names, what research, how we researched the names and then how it got narrowed down to three?
Yes, and maybe how the committee came together, sure. We started by just reaching out to the community and asking, letting them know that we have a new school and that we'll be naming it. And that they were able to give suggestions through community relations website and Facebook pages for schools and then the new school has a Facebook page as well. And we started receiving name suggestions from the community. And we actually received 48 names. Most of those names had some research or historical significance or they were a name of someone who had contributed to education in some profound or meaningful way. And we met with the committee. And the first day, our first time we met, we were able to narrow that list down to 10 because the committee was given a set of criteria. And so several of the names then had to come off the list. They were similar to names in our area or difficult to pronounce or the person was living, things like that. So the kids came up with 10 names and they went back to their communities, mostly their schools and their churches and asked for input on the list of the 10 names. And then we met again and they were asked, they narrowed it down to three at that point. And, or four?
Five.
Five, thank you. I should add you to this, Mrs. Kim. So at that point, while the kids were also out getting votes and talking to their neighbors, we did continue to get names and one name kept coming back up, which was a Native American version of Mount St. Helens. So we put that back on and then the kids went out again and they polled their neighbors and we narrowed it down to the three and felt we should add back that fourth, as we said last time, that some version of Mount St. Helens. And the kids worked really hard to, well, a lot of them did some research. So the Emerald was the first name on the list and that was because we're called the Evergreen State, but we already have schools named Evergreen, so they felt that Emerald was green or the Green State. There's greenery around the school and they felt like that was a good name for the school. The next name was Springbrook, which was actually, that name was submitted by the family that owned Springbrook Dairy or Springbrook Farm, which is the farm around the school. It's also the parcel name for where the school is being built. And then the last name was Spirit Ridge and the kids really liked that name. It was very popular among the kids. They felt like it had a positive feeling about the school and had just that tone of positivity and spirit and they really liked that name. And then we brought back the Mount St. Helens names because again, those names kept coming back up. And the architect had built the building so that the windows would have a view of Mount St. Helens on a clear day. And that's the process. Then you got to see they came here and did a fantastic job of presenting. So that's how we landed on those names.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Can you remind us how many votes each?
I don't, I don't know of all.
I do.
I do.
Emerald was 67, Springbrook was 64, and Spirit Ridge was 24 votes.
And then what about the?
Lewitt was 21 votes. And that was actually three different versions of Lewitt.
Yeah, Mount St. Helens Elementary is there with 21 votes. Since the names received for some version of Mount St. Helens is 41 votes. So I guess I just wanted to say in our thought process about how we wrote the policy and everything, that I had a favorite name and it's not on the list anymore. But I was a student of Waihesta and I think that was the first of our schools to receive a Native American name for a school. And because it was named Waihesta, they told us the story behind the name. And I learned things about the cultures that preceded ours on the land before Fort Vancouver was established and the European culture began to have its place here. And that meant giving a perspective at an early age that I don't think otherwise would have gotten because the school had that kind of name. And I don't know if that's an inevitable outcome for this process, but as you build your culture, what I'd ask is probably what you're planning to do anyways, is to include those stories and that history. Because it is beautiful, a legend about the way that the mountains got their names and the context of all that is important to keep, even if we don't name the school Lewitt. It's one of my favorites.
Well, I think that the kids did a fantastic job. They did great in their presentation. It was a lot of fun to have them here last time. They had a clear choice in the three that they had brought to the board. Their clear choice was Emerald Elementary. Some of their reasons behind it, and I kind of pulled those up, but they liked the name, they loved the color and how everything is green, which kind of fits with our evergreen, right? Because our entire district is evergreen. They also thought it, kind of like how they use some of the characteristics from The Wizard of Oz of brain, heart, and courage about, you know, some of the characteristics we want for our students. I kind of look at it as, you know, it's like Emerald is also the stone of the heart. It symbolizes mercy, compassion, universal love, and some of the other characteristics that we want for our kids. I like the name. I think that, you know, it kind of fits with, you know, it's like the little gemstones of Evergreen. So that's kind of how it's been resonating with me over the past couple of weeks.
I too thought the kids did a really good job in their presentation. And they obviously were very excited about the process and what they brought, you know, they brought to us that enthusiasm and I wanna honor that. And I think it's great that we do the kind of process that involves the kids that will be going to the school and their families. And obviously they went out there, talked to the neighbors and got the input. And I think that's a really good thing. So I wanted to support what they were feeling about the school and that. So I too, though, I'm with Rob on, I would, the St. Helens Lewitt, I like a lot, but I also know there's a brewery named Lewitt. And I think that would get a little convoluted with our school. And so that was a drawback for me on that one. So the Emerald one seems appealing to me and for the reasons that the kids had and the research that Julie did on the, and who doesn't love it?
They're beautiful. My favorite color.
Yeah, I think I've struggled too with the idea of giving a school a name with, you know, more meaning to our area versus all the work that these kids put into it and the meaning that it would have to the children of this future school to have, have such a hands-on process in naming the school. And I feel like that is going to be invaluable to those children, probably for the rest of their lives. They'll always feel like, oh, I helped name my elementary school. And that would be something that I would brag about now if I had to do that. So, you know, I, but I really liked the names, you know, like Lewitt or the other names presented to us that were kind of along those lines as well. I also really like Spirit Ridge, just because it sounds so happy and like a beautiful place. So I think the kids picked out, they gave us three really good names. And I wanna clarify though, for tonight, we're not considering a Mount St. Helens name, correct? We're just considering Emeralds, Spirit Ridge, and Springbrook.
Those are the three names that were brought forward from the committee for us to vote on. However, we could reject all three.
We could reject all three.
Or you can vote for an alternative name as well.
Oh, is there a fill-in-blank?
Yeah, well.
Does that look in the ballot? No.
You can write in.
You could try it.
Chances of matching anybody else's write-in is slim to none.
You'll disvoid your vote.
Sometimes write-ins have power. So yes, you could write in a name, an alternative name.
What happens if we don't have a clear majority?
We might have to go back to the committee. I believe that's what it says on the policy.
Isn't this just my call in?
Or do we take the top two in our runoff?
Well, we can do multiple votes.
I think Mr. Perez wants to speak on Nina's behalf, because that Girl Scouts.
If I may, real quickly.
We don't have a scout here because they're at their scout meetings tonight.
Thank you, thanks for the opportunity to speak. I think being an observer of the process and the kids coming up last week and sitting them at the meetings and participating, seeing how excited they were about the names they came up with on the top three of their list, and feel like, I feel like if we don't pick from those lists of the top three of their names, they're gonna feel like the system let me down. And I think that's part of what they need to do. Is, I'm not trying to direct your vote, I'm saying that there's, each of the names are great. Emerald is fantastic. I like Spirit Ridge because of the spirits. And there's so much, the Native American history that we can use, the Cherokee and the winds and the Chinook. I mean, there's just so much that we can use in any one of the names. I think that it offers a lot of opportunities. So I think keeping it to the spirit of the kids who brought the names forward, I think is the best thing we can do as adults and their leaders, so the future leaders have an idea of what they should do when they get their shot.
You know this is recorded.
I do.
All your family knows you voted against them.
Good.
They wanted them all.
Oh no, I mean, I wanted them all, I mean, anyone in the top three, so.
This is Mr. Perez, he's a lunchroom coordinator and playground monitor and, what else did you spell it out for?
Everything you needed.
Are you trying to get that on record?
Well, I, at the last board meeting, I polled all the students and they obviously won my heart before the meeting even started. I had them all up here ready to be board members. So they could have actually recommended ES-22 and I probably would have went with it. So I am, I didn't even need to really think about it. I'm ready.
I really like the idea of being able to say that students selected this. Because that's a positive thing that'll last for a couple generations, I think. It's a good thing to change to, just to have students in the process like this.
Alright, so before we vote, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this matter? Alright, so we will do a roll call vote. Paper ballot, we'll all vote, we'll pass them to Superintendent Merlino, who will read our votes.
You wanna say something?
I think it's an open vote. He has to read them aloud with the hands.
Yes, I will. So the first vote is from Director Rogers, Emerald Elementary. President Boconegra, Emerald Elementary. I'll go with Director Perkins, Spirit Ridge Elementary. So two to one. I think the others have already said, there wasn't a change. Director Radford, Emerald Elementary. And Director Grunwald, Emerald Elementary. So four to one, Emerald.
There we go.
Congratulations.
It's really gonna be hard not to call it ES-22. I don't know, that's gonna be really hard.
And I am, just for the record here, entirely in support of this process. And I'm happy to call it Emerald Elementary, too.
Well, we're gonna have to because that's now the name. The signs can start being made. Alright, so next, another one. We're gonna rename Forty-Ninth Street Academy. As we know that this building that we just recognized in Evergreen Awards and the staff is moving and they're going to get a new building that's gonna be under construction very soon. For this, Amber, do you wanna come up? They also had a process that went through with some students that led that. Do you wanna talk a little bit about that, Amber?
Yeah, we had two of our students come with us, third grader Marcus and our 10th grader Yash. And they presented the three names and then did a nice little handshake they had prepared for the board at the end.
That's nice.
Right, Darcy didn't know about the handshake. She was a little bit, I didn't tell her. Upshine.
So do we have questions for Amber?
I thought you guys came up with some really great options for us. A tough choice. Did we ever determine whether Ms. Hollingsworth is still living? I believe she is still living.
She is 99 years old. And in the second, you recommended to avoid people living, but did not say, or discouraged it. Did not say it was against the rules.
Okay.
We thought it would be kind of cool, actually, if we were named that to be able to reach out to her because she still is living and maybe she would come down or at least we could let her know that all the work that she's done, that we felt that that's what we wanted, why we wanted to name our school and empower our students after all of her hard work she did over the last 99 years of her life.
We kind of thought the same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah. If she was the, if that was the chosen name.
So the committee brought to us, just for the record, Edwin T. Pratt Academy, Hollingsworth Academy, and then Parkview Academy. Those are the three names.
And they were all good names. They were really good names.
Any discussion on these? I agree with Victoria, I think, because two were significant figures in, both in the Seattle area, that had a lot with public education.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, for me, Hollingsworth Academy really spoke to me for a few different reasons. First, black female school board director in Seattle area, naming a school after a woman, which is not something we see super often, although we do have Hila. And then also the, that was a choice of both students that came and presented to us last week. Is that, do you think that's the most popular choice?
Yeah, yeah, I thought Hollingsworth was on top for staff and students. Right, staff?
It's very shaken, no, I'm kidding.
I think both students said that.
Yeah, it was their choice, for sure.
And I liked it that the two people were from Washington State. Doesn't, didn't matter to me that they were from the Seattle area, but I did like it that Ms. Holl was from, you know, was in it, was an educator and had been on a school board. And I just, I don't know, just looking at her pictures and stuff, I don't know, there's just something about her, I just thought, I know I would just love her.
Right, the art.
The artwork was great. There are other pictures that we saw of her online. She just seemed like somebody that would be fun to be around and that she was probably, she's probably quite the dynamo, yeah.
And I think what you guys talked about earlier with the elementary school, like teaching our students and really because she tried to become a teacher and they wouldn't let her because she was black. But then she went on and got her masters to go into social work because her passion was really helping underprivileged youth. I think that is an awesome message to keep with our kids, especially at Forty-Ninth Street, where sometimes they're coming to us where they feel like they've been excluded from their comprehensive school due to their behaviors, that it's okay, you can overcome it. And kind of we would just wanna carry that message of her and to our students, so.
Yeah, it's a good message, overcoming obstacles.
Yeah.
It's great.
It's just like the Waihesta story. It'll be a story for the school.
Correct, yeah.
And build that context where it'll...
Also, we thought would be the hedgehogs, which are really cute.
And they're kind of like our kids, too. You rub them one way, they're really soft, and the other way, a little prickly. Yeah, they're really resilient little animals, too.
When I had my visit last year, that was just breathtakingly good. It was so neat to see what goes on in there.
Well, we know that we're super excited to get a new building and just continue all the good work, so.
Very excited.
This is a tough building.
Is there any other public comment about this, about the naming of, renaming of Forty-Ninth Street Academy? Alright, if not, I think it's time to vote.
Board member Grunwald, Hollingsworth Academy. Board member Perkins, Hollingsworth Academy. Board member Victoria? Hollingsworth Academy. Board member Boconegra, Hollingsworth Academy. And board member Rogers, Hollingsworth Academy. So.
I just wanna quickly say thank you guys for all of your work because I was really scared we were just gonna drop the four and go with Night Street. And that was not okay.
No, that school is important and it needs a great name.
A really powerful.
A really good name, I think.
And I love the hedgehog thing. I actually have a, I was dealing with my five-year-old right before this, so I totally get that from different directions. Alright, thank you. We will now move on to our board consent agenda. We'll entertain a motion for the board consent agenda.
Remove.
Second.
Moving second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then we'll move on to the superintendent consent agenda. Again, we'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Moving second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, superintendent report, Superintendent Merlino?
Yeah, just a quick report. I just wanted to, first of all, report that the bids came in, I think it was last week, on the legacy Hollingsworth Academy and transitions construction project. Again, underbid. I don't remember exactly what we were expecting, but we came in under the amount that we were expecting. I think it's March...
Board member Grunwald, Hollingsworth Academy. Board member Perkins, Hollingsworth Academy. Board member Victoria? Hollingsworth Academy. Board member Boconegra, Hollingsworth Academy, and Board member Rogers, Hollingsworth Academy. So, we give those.
I just want to quickly say thank you, guys, for all of your work, because I was really scared we were just gonna drop the four and go with Ninth Street. And that was not okay.
No, that school is important, and it needs a great name.
A really powerful.
A really good name, I think.
Yeah. And I love the hedgehog thing. I actually have a, I was dealing with my five-year-old right before this, so I totally get that, from different directions. All right, thank you. We will now move on to our board consent agenda. Will entertain a motion for the board consent agenda?
Remove.
Second.
Moving second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then we'll move on to the superintendent consent agenda. Again, we'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Moving second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, superintendent report. Superintendent Merlino?
Yeah, just a quick report. I just wanted to, first of all, report that the bids came in, I think it was last week, on the legacy Hollingsworth Academy and Transitions Construction Project. Again, underbid. I don't remember exactly what we were expecting, but we came in under the amount that we were expecting. I think it's March 5th, or somewhere around there. One of these, in the next couple of weeks, is the groundbreaking. We've been on a run of successful bids. I think part of that is due to the strategy of timing. When we have gone out for bid, part of it is that we're just having more contractors bid on the projects, which is tremendous. But it is the timing of when Sue and RNC Construction, or RC Consulting, our property, our management company, determined to try to get ahead of the other projects that come, do, you know, bid generally in the spring. So, it's been quite amazing to see every one of the elementary schools, I think we've done five of the six, have been bid. And every elementary bid has gotten lower than the previous one. So, from, you think about when Sifton was done on the GCCM, Image, Emerald, and now Marion, and Elver, everyone, the bids have come down. So, the Bond project is going extremely well, and we're real excited about that. And we'll, I don't know, I think we have another, is it, we have it in December, so probably March, we've got the next quarterly update, I would imagine, for the board. So, that's good news. I spent last Thursday in Olympia all day long, meeting with legislators, basically being told that education, we've spent a lot of time on you the last several years. It's a short session. Not much is happening with education, but I think it's good for me to have the opportunity to get in front of as many legislators as possible, which I did do, so that we can set the tone for the next full session that we have coming up a year from now. So, it's kind of the work that needs to happen ongoing. And the last thing I would really quickly mention is yesterday, I was fortunate to go with Melanie Green and, I believe, almost every one of our FCRC directors to the Kiggins Theater, not to see Parasite, I did see that that's showing, but to receive a $210,000 donation from Zoom Info. Henry Shuck is the CEO of the company, who basically talked a lot about the fact that their belief is that they want to do well as a company, but they also want to do good as a company. So, they've done extremely well. I think he said that they started in 2009, three employees. They have 560 in Vancouver now, 1,200 worldwide. And they've done good as well, because every year they've donated a larger amount. And he himself matches the amount that the company raised. So, the company raised about $60,000. The board committed another $45,000, and then he ended up matching that for another $105,000. So, he and his wife and his daughter were there. Very fortunate that we have partners like that working for us. And then we were, for the first time, this is the first time I've been to one of these, but I was, we were all able to have the Harthwood Fourth Grade Choir singing three songs as well. The teacher's name, I think it's Miss Kamacy. I'm not exactly sure if that's the right way to pronounce it or not. But did a great job with the kids. They did a great job. It was a great event. Very, very happy to be able to be a part of that. That's all I got.
All right, great. Thank you, Mike. All right, next is monitoring district operations. The first one is operational expectations OE 12, which is facilities. This is a second reading, so we workshop that. We had it at our last board meeting as a first reading, and now it's back as a second reading. I'm gonna turn this back over to Mike.
Yeah, I am, basically, this is a second reading. This is the process that we've gone through, where we've reviewed the, we've reviewed the OEs throughout the year. We've made recommendations to board policy changes. We workshop it in, workshop, I think, about a month or so ago. Two weeks ago, we had a first reading. And tonight is the second reading, and basically, it just, basically says our facilities will support the results policies that the board has generated, and it kind of gives what the superintendent will and will not do. There aren't any changes from what we had two weeks ago, so I would recommend that we adopt the OE 12 board policy, OE 12.
All right, thank you. This time, is there any questions or comments from the audience? All right, then we will call for a motion.
I move the board accepts the proposed revisions for operational expectation OE 12 facilities as presented for approval.
Second.
All right, so moving second, and we'll go ahead and open it up to the board for questions. All right, so then, I guess if we don't have any questions or comments on this one, we'll go ahead and vote to accept the proposed revisions for operational expectations OE 12 facilities as presented for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it is approved as presented. So, we'll move on now to OE 12, which is facilities interpretation and indicators, and this is a first reading.
It is a first reading. And basically, what we do with this process is the board has the policy that sets, as I said, that we shall have facilities that support the results policies of the board. At that point in time, Sue Steinbrenner, our director, executive director of facilities, has gone through, and then I interpret what the policy entails, and then we share what evidence that we have to support that as well. So, we have in 12-1, the superintendent will develop and execute a facilities maintenance plan that establishes priorities for maintenance and capital renewal. And then, basically, what you see are indicators of compliance, that we have an updated plan that we present to the board annually. Each of these items that was brought forward in the policy then actually has quite extensive interpretation and evidence to support the work that would be done to move the OE forward. So, we did speak to this in the board workshop two weeks ago. Sue presented to the board. So, I would recommend that we move this policy interpretation and indicators forward for second reading.
All right, great. Thank you. Is there any questions or comments from the audience? All right, then we will call for a motion.
I move the board accepts the proposed revisions for operational expectations OE 12 facilities interpretation and indicators as presented for first reading and move it forward for second reading and approval.
Second.
All right, so moving to second, and we'll go ahead and open it up to questions or comments from the board.
I think it's important for the public to note that this is a maintenance plan that really goes to the heart of maintaining our facilities at the highest level possible and make sure that we address not only any kind of deterioration of our facilities, but also personal health concerns that might occur if we let that happen. So, we're looking at what we can do for maintenance and infrastructure maintenance to look at ways of avoiding any concerns in that regard. It also is about asset preservation. And then, as we have these capital projects, how we manage those and the kinds of things that we can and can't do, how we address hazardous materials, as in not having hazardous conditions on our properties, and things of that nature. So, it's a pretty detailed list of things that can and can't happen on our properties. So, I appreciate the work that went into that by facilities, you leading the charge on that.
This took a long time. It was a lot of work. And then the result is clear to read and sort of reflective. We've always gotten great detail about physical facilities every year. It's good to see it laid out that we'll be getting that. Yeah. I'm just glad that the good work is done.
Well, not quite, because it's a first reading, but.
No problem.
Yeah. Yeah, it feels like we have kind of workshop this and talked about this one for a while, so it's nice that it's finally on here for a first reading. Anything else? All right, then we will go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, so we'll move this forward to a second reading on March 10. All right, next is the good news report. Gil Spoeler will come up and give us all the good news.
So, hopefully, we have the links working. No?
No.
It says error not found. Okay, sorry.
It says, "Request access."
So, for both of them?
Yeah.
All right. So, if you were able to view the good news, what you would see is the photos from two of our elementaries. February is kindness month. It's also Valentine's Day. And so, there was a theme at both Pioneer Elementary, where they did a whole board of hearts and celebrated kindness. And then you took that the little hearts to the last board meeting as well that they made. Then over at Furpress Elementary, they also had a heart theme, and their theme besides kindness was "It's Cool to Be Kind." So, they did their wall as well. And so, when we can let you see that, you will see both of these beautiful photos and the walls that were done at the elementaries. There were also a number of multicultural events held throughout our schools this past month. Two that we featured included some multicultural events at Heritage High School and Harthwood Elementary, as well as an MLK reading at Silver Star Elementary. Of course, one of our favorites, and I know that it was a favorite by at least one of our board members, was the Hundred Days of School at Fisher's Landing Elementary. It, I, there's no other way to say it. It was just darling. Kindergarteners dressed as 100-year-old citizens and their interpretation of what it meant to be 100 years old. And then the teachers got into the spirit of it as well. And so, if you haven't seen that video, and it is featuring, they were all cute kindergarteners, but there was one that was especially cute. And that was Rachel's daughter. And so, just some of the ways that we make learning fun in our schools. Another video that's featured in the good news is our Mountain View High School Unified Basketball Team. They are headed to the Special Olympics Washington Winter State Games. Again, a wonderful story about how our equity and inclusiveness is working at the high school level for our sports. It is that time of the year. You will also see a number of our clubs and organizations with students competing at the regional level and then qualifying for state. So, we have Mountain View High School Deca and Union High School Deca. Between the two of them, there's gonna be probably 40 kids heading on to state after qualifying here at the regional events. Also, FBLA, Future Business Leaders of America, Mountain View and Union also had numerous students placed at regionals, and they will continue on to the state competition as well. We also have an award winner from OSPI's Art Show. So, the Washington Association of School Administrators Award was given to Jessica Zakova. She has a wonderful photo that was selected, and she is a student at Hila. And then, finally, we have a finalist for the National Merit Scholarship Competition. Mountain View High School senior Sharisha Mallon has been named a finalist. She's won at 15,000 high school seniors nationwide. They've been named a National Merit Scholar. So, I'm gonna run back and see if I can get it to open for you, and so you can look at all of the charming good news, and then there's more included as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gil. All right, next is the budget update. Superintendent Merlino will give us the budget update.
Yeah, you have in your board packet a few different documents. The ones that we have for years used is the staffing reconciliation, as well as kind of an estimate of where I believe we're gonna be at the end of the year. On the staffing reconciliation, our enrollment in the month of February kind of ticked up a little bit. And we have to, as I've mentioned many times, it's each month looking at our enrollment numbers for the month, and then estimating the average for the year. Right now, it looks like we'll be within, eight below what we had budgeted for elementary 49, middle school, and 28 high school. And then down below, you can see the staff allocation versus the actual staffing allocation. We have, we're a little bit over what we had budgeted. 1,183 is what this number of enrollment generates, and we're at about 1,192, so a little over eight. Special ed, staffing allocation. On the cert side, we're a little below what we had budgeted, and classified, we're a little above what we had budgeted. So, you know, the year has been kind of what we had expected. We went into the year thinking that we were gonna, we had budgeted for a bit of a fund balance decrease. And when I discussed this with you at last month's board meeting, we were kind of on pace for just exactly that, a little bit of a decrease. I'm estimating, in the second document, a fund balance going from around $23.1 million to around $22.8. So, a roughly $300,000 drop. I feel like most years, as the year goes on, things get a little better than expected. One of the things that we had confirmed was our transportation allocation. We've been underfunded in transportation for years. The allocation, we had budgeted about $16 million this year, which still would show about a $2 million shortfall. Million and a half to $2 million. It ended up being about $16.5 million, so that's a positive. One of the other things we were waiting for, as we got to the month of January, was what, you know, we've talked a lot about over the last year, what is the SEB program gonna actually look like in terms of costs? And until you actually, we actually got to January, we could make estimates of what we thought it was going to be. But until you actually get the first billing and see where all the dollars shake out, it's hard to tell exactly where that's going to be in terms of total amounts. Ultimately, I think what we had estimated, we came in a little bit under that in January. So, we'll see as the rest of the year progresses, how that works out. Right now, I would say that our estimate of a little bit of a decline in fund balance, I think we could end up being right at or break even, or maybe it would have been increased at the end of the day, which is a good thing. The legislature, I talked about being up there last week. We, our main efforts in the conversations with legislators was really to try to limit unfunded mandates. We've talked about that as a board and in the district for years. I think that most of the bills that would have been exactly that, unfunded mandates, have died in committee. We supported a lot of the concepts of some of these bills. However, we've tried to be strong with the idea that if you're not gonna fund it, it might be important, but it's really important if you put money behind it. And so, I think that that was successful, our efforts in sharing that. The budgets came out, both for the Senate and the House, still kind of reviewing some of the work on that. So, in the next few meetings, we'll be able to come back and have more conversation about that. As it stands, I think the year is probably at or a little bit better than what we had expected when we built the budget last summer, and that's a good thing. That's all I have.
All right, thanks, Mike. Any questions for Mike's budget? All right, next is board comments, comments by the school board. Does anybody have anything they'd like to share?
Well, the courthouse was taken over last week by high schoolers competing in the Almack Trial competition, so including two teams from Cascadia Tech. And unsurprisingly, I think, for like the fifth, sixth year in a row, Cascadia Tech, one of the teams, won first place. And one of their attorneys won best attorney overall for the entire competition. So, one of their student attorneys, obviously, student playing an attorney, you know. Student playing an attorney, you know? To be clear. And I actually had a chance to sit in on one of their trials, and they were phenomenal. They were really, really great. And they put in so much hard work to learning this case and putting, you know, the trial on. And it's just a phenomenal, I think, program that they have over at Cascadia Tech that really puts them above and beyond like what you can really see from a lot of the other schools in the area too, who also put in a lot of really hard work and did a great job. That was a fun thing I got to do.
That's fun thing. They get to come and be at the courthouse and in the real setting and really see what it's like.
Yeah, and they have real lawyers and real judges judging and being the pretend jury. So, and then rating, and that's how they get their scores, by these lawyers. And then they get advice from the lawyers and the judges and stuff. So, you know. It's fun for the students, probably nerve-wracking as well when you land some of our judges. That was a fun thing I got to do. I'm sure you gave them a little tips.
That part's just like being an actual attorney, then.
Yeah.
That's good.
So I was just looking at the calendar. It turned out my last week was, every single day was something with the schools. We had the online learning advisory committee. And actually, that's an appointment that I have through WASDA to be like the school director voice on OSPI committee that sets rules for online learning. We actually got a chance to workshop some of the definitions that they were using to change from some of the terms that have to do with multi-district online learning programs, like the one that Evergreen gave up when it wasn't working for kids, in favor of a single district online program. We went back and forth about what it means and why some entities embrace one model and the other model. And it got really wonky. And I ended up asking, what's the essential question behind this? Why are we doing this work? And they thought about that. It was the first time that that committee, in my experience, had actually had us workshop something. And that alone was a good experience, but somehow I ended up with an invitation to sit down with Rhett Nelson one-on-one on the 5th of March. He's coming through Vancouver. And I said, in response, well, why don't you come to the groundbreaking of our new ALE facilities? And he thought that was a wonderful idea. So we're going to have that assistant director level person from OSPI over ALE online learning come to our groundbreaking. And so that was pretty cool. Also, we had breakfast with the board at Heritage. And got to talk to a dozen of some of the students I've ever met. We said that last year too. But they were open and candid with their experience and.
Real talkative group.
Real talkative group. And we were able to just listen, rephrase, hear from them all. And Gail Spoiler was there taking notes. So there's a document full of notes about that experience that we've captured. And continuing to think about some of the things that they've said. It just, I guess, brings me more enthusiasm for building that more structured student voice piece that Nick and Jenny have been working on, Rachel and, two other board members, not me, have been working on. And then I, I think the high point was actually Friday. I was able to tag along with the School District Foundation when they presented the educator of the year award to Andrew Levin, a family and consumer science teacher at Frontier Middle School. It was neat to see the surprise on his face, but just from the atmosphere that he had in the room, he had the kids making scratch pancakes. Then they were delicious. They were like four out of four exceed standards pancakes. They were wonderful.
Was it planned to go to the classroom the day he was making pancakes? Is that how it worked out?
I think.
Rob had said he wanted some pancakes.
Yeah, no. But, no, that was happenstance, honestly. The point was to surprise him. And he was very surprised and very honored. And the ESDF folks were there, very, very happy to present an award like that and came with like $500.
$500.
Yeah.
He was in their classroom.
That was, that was the stuff I got to do. Oh, and I've been invited to testify tomorrow before Senator Wellman's committee on a bill. But I'll talk about that more in workshop, make a decision about whether or not we actually do that.
Well, speaking of the foundation, just a reminder that the gala's coming up next month, so make sure you get your tickets.
Are they ready for sale?
Yeah.
Yeah. Get your cute outfits ready and your tuxedos ready or suits or whatever you're going to wear.
Mr. Party on Park Place, right?
Yeah.
So I could come with a hat?
Wherever you want.
Hotel?
It's a hotel.
I just want to say that we had quite the little bowling experience on Sunday with the, for the Evergreen Citizens for School. You were a good cheerleader for us, Rob.
Good team.
Second place.
I know, we're destined to be second.
Really, is that what you guys?
Those ringers.
It isn't Dave's fault. He killed it, he is a high schooler.
I'm afraid I'm the weight around the neck of this team.
That's all right, there's always next year, right?
Yeah, I'd be glad the lorry was playing instead of me.
Well, I'm just glad I wasn't there because I always thought I was the bad mojo for it.
I'm the bad one.
That's all right, we'll keep coming back. It's a fun way to raise money for the.
It is fun.
Bond and loving campaign.
We have fun. We do have a good time. So, and we did find out the Rachel Snow slouch out there.
That's true.
I had a couple lucky games, but it was fun. It was fun. We had a good time.
Well, I unfortunately missed the bowling tournament. I actually was attending the Miss Clark County Scholarship.